We're going to call this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this special meeting of the Muscatine City Council, June 23, 2016. Fran, would you please do a roll call?
Councilwoman Ray Walt.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Nat Fig.
Present.
Sosado.
Present.
Finem.
Present.
Harvey.
Present.
Spread.
Present.
I'll present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Fran. Since this is a special meeting, we're going to move right on to the agenda and have our attorney, Matt Brick, start with the review and discussion.
Thank you very much, Mayor. At the April 21 council meeting, the council directed me to research amending the city's appointment process. Currently, most of the appointments are done where the mayor appoints and the council approves. And I was asked to research what methods could be undertaken to make the process where the council both appoints and approves for most of the boards and for the police and fire chief. The purpose of tonight's meeting is threefold. First, I'm going to provide the council with feedback on their request to change the appointment process. Second, if you have a copy of the agenda, you'll see there's also an update I will be providing to the council and the elected officials about outstanding city claims and appeals. I don't often come to these meetings, so when I do, I usually try to update them on the status of an appeal with a drainage district or other extremely exciting things like that. We'll be doing that tonight. And then third and finally, we have two closed sessions to discuss actual pending litigation or threatened litigation against the city. To clear up any miscommunication, the closed sessions tonight have nothing to do with the council's motion to change the appointment process. After tonight, depending on how the council gives me direction, I will, if they stay steady with what they've told me to do before, I'll prepare changes to the city code and/or the city council rules. And then at a later date, that's when the council would vote to take action. So to be clear again, there will be no motions, no resolutions, no ordinance changes being voted on tonight. That being said, I want to turn to my legal opinion regarding the proposed amendments. I'm going to break them down into a couple different sections because there's a lot of things to talk to you about. The first is those boards and commissions that are expressly identified in the city code or expressly created by the state code. And that is the Airport Advisory Commission, the Art Center Board of Trustees, the Civil Service Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, the Library Board of Trustees, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Board of Water, Electric, and Communications Trustees, and the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Now, except for the Library Board, which I'm going to talk about in a moment, the remainders of those boards and commissions, there's nothing in the law that would prevent the city council from taking over the entire appointment process of both appointment and approval for the members on those commissions. If that is what you want me to go through and do, that would be a change I would recommend via ordinance, not your council rules. Now, I mentioned the Library Board. Under the law, the Library Board of Trustees, any changes to that appointment process needs to be first presented to the voters and have them approve it before the changes could be effective. So there wouldn't be anything you could do in your council rules or your ordinance to effectuate the change at this time. It would have to be at the next general election, if that's what you want to do for the Library Board. Now, previously, we've mentioned there are, used to be, and I don't know if there still are, some other boards and commissions that aren't in your city code. Primarily, I'm thinking about the mayor's, the CCAT Board, the Commission...
Community Initiative Action Team.
Thank you, Mayor. The Community Initiative Action Team. With regard to that and any other boards that you still have, ad hoc committees or commissions that you still have that are not part of the city code, you already changed your ordinances last year, so you wouldn't need to change those under any provision that you have. But if you're going to keep any of those in existence, like the mayor's, will you say it again?
Community Initiative Action Team.
Thank you, Mayor. You may want to reconstitute or reform the committee under the new rules that you adopted last year, since it's my understanding that committee was initially created under your old rules. Not that you can't leave it the way it is, but in the effort of showing the utmost clarity, you may want to consider that. That doesn't require me to do anything or to make any changes to your city code. Now, police and fire. City council has the ability, under state law, to revise the city code by ordinance to change the appointment process for those two positions if you so desire to have the council do both the appointment and the approval of those two positions. And then essentially, in a nutshell, for everything but the Library Board, you can direct me via changes to the ordinance to vest the power in you for both appointing and approving the board members, the commissioners, and the trustees that go on those boards. The other issue that was raised was the idea of creating a formal meeting or a formal appointment meeting every January where the council and the mayor would have as part of a regularly scheduled meeting the discussion and the appointment and the approval of the board members, the commissioners, and the trustees. Now, that's something that can also be via ordinance, but I did want to get your feedback because generally, that would be something that would be in council rules and your existing council rules, having that meeting spelled out in the rules might make more sense. There's no problem making every single change in the city code, but if you later on wanted to make some changes to that meeting, make it more frequent or less frequent or do it at another month, it would be easier for you to modify that if it was in the council rules. So, in a nutshell, my legal opinion is, outside of the Library Board, you can make the changes that you want, which would be to take the mayor's appointment authority away and take it for yourselves and for you to keep the approval authority that you already have for all the boards and commissions other than the Library Board and for the police and the fire chief. And then in addition, you can create a formalized committee that meets in January at a regular meeting for all of the electeds to discuss the appointment process and the approval process. And again, that one can be either via ordinance or council rule. Because there were a couple ways you could do this, I didn't want to overwhelm you with every single various option, but depending on the timeline you want to proceed, if you do want to proceed, I will be able to get you drafts of the changes to the code and/or council rules before your next meetings in July, which I believe right now are the only meetings you have on the calendar. I don't think you have any further special meetings called at this point. Now, for the council members, do you have any questions about what the opinion that I just gave?
I just, go ahead. My only question was with a formal appointment meeting in January, that would be the entire council or could that be a mix of who you want? Could you decide, the council decide what the makeup of that committee is going to be that would make the appointments or would it be basically we'd do it at a council meeting?
Well, generally, if you were to make the change to the city code to vest both the appointment and the approval process and you, the council, it would need to be a quorum, a majority of the council voting on it. So generally, I did not look at the issue of if it could be anything less than the full council. My understanding was you were looking at doing it as, at a regular session of the council. While you may be able to do it in a smaller group, and if that so will, I could look at it, I can tell you comfortably, if you do it at a regular meeting, there's no issue in doing it at a regular meeting.
Right. Well, my idea was to do it as a subcommittee, like our audit committee or whatever, other committees that we have, and then would bring the appointments, whoever we decide would be brought forth for appointment, that would be brought forth at a regular city council meeting and approved by council.
What I could do for all of you, because again, you're not being asked to and you're not making any decisions tonight, what can be provided for you before you want to act on this would be the code changes if it's done at a regular meeting, the council rules if you want to put the meeting in the council rules, and then the code changes, I'd have to research it, but if you want to have less than the full council involved in the process. If there's a way to do it, I could give you the language for that or tell you you're not able to do it with less than the full council. Does that make sense?
I think what he's talking about is a nominating committee process.
Correct, correct.
And at that full council meeting to discuss potential appointments, the mayor could be included or not?
Well, right now, the way it was presented to me from the motion was that it would be as part of a regular meeting that you would have, so the mayor would be part of the regular meeting.
The only difficulty I see in having a, say, a meeting in the first of the year would be, most of the term limits go off on the June 30th, so we'd have to be presupposing who needed to be replaced, et cetera, at that time.
Well, or you have, or you have meetings a couple times a year related, as part of the agenda. That was one reason why I thought if we had a, more of a subcommittee make, to bring forth names, and then that subcommittee would decide who would be brought forth for council approval, might make it easier rather than having the entire council.
Okay.
That was my thought.
Well, I'll make sure when you get the drafts for your review, if there's a way to do that, it'll be provided and set forth, and if not, there'll be an explanation of this, you know, under this section of the code, we can't do that because of X, Y, or Z.
I'd like to see the subcommittee approach research offered out.
Yes, sir.
Matt, I believe it might be appropriate at this time to make a comment. We, as city council people, must, and I repeat, must listen to our people. Overwhelmingly, the people do not want anything taken away from our mayor. I certainly recommend that the power stay with the mayor. All of the reactions come from the mayor and try to improve our communication with the mayor eventually or as a council as such.
I certainly understand that. Thank you.
At this time...
Just to make sure, any other direction from any other council member, and I appreciate the three of you who have given, four of you have given me direction, any other direction from that or as long, I have a fairly good idea, I just wanted to make sure when we presented this that there weren't any other issues that have come up or there weren't any questions you had based on the research that I had found.
Whatever we come up with, I would like to avoid the stalemate that we've got into now with no nominations or appointments coming forward.
Okay.
I think that subcommittee approach maybe could do that.
I'd like to see the results of the subcommittee approach.
Yeah, I will, I will get on that and I will respond to it. I apologize, I did not look into that, I didn't, I didn't understand, that was part of my, that was my fault, part of my goal, so I apologize.
And the part about the police and fire, city administrator currently evaluates all department heads, and these are two positions, they are department heads, they are not, are they eval, do you actually evaluate them? You do evaluate.
Other than Art Center and Library Board.
Okay. Well, he does the evaluation, but, but then the recommendation of hiring or firing is in the mayor's hands and I, I don't, if he does the evaluations and he does it for everyone else and recommends hiring and firing all the other staff members, then I don't see any reason why police and fire should be any different.
Yes, sir.
I have a comment on the police and fire that I don't mind the mayor having that appointment over the police and fire chief, but I do have reservations with having that just be unilateral because anybody that's in Muscatine long enough knows that in the late 1980s, we had a new mayor come on board and within days fired the police chief because of personal vendetta or whatever. And so, at the minimum, I'd like to see if that power remains with the mayor, that there be, say, a review by council or whatever for the reason...
It's that way now, Alan. The council has to approve it.
The mayor recommends, but council has, has final approval. At that point, and I was in town at the time, but I wasn't paying a lot of attention, but I do remember all the, so I couldn't remember what the specifics were, but I don't want, that's what I want to avoid, that same kind of situation.
I know it's caught the community by surprise when that happened, and I think it was up to a year or something before we had a new police chief.
A lot of turmoil.
But the check and balances there now, even if the mayor does choose to hire or...
Recommend.
Or fire.
More concerned about arbitrarily firing.
Council has to approve it. Yeah, the council still has to prove it right now.
As I understand...
Any other questions?
Well, as I understand, both the police chief and the fire chief do have civil service protection. And I know I look at it a little differently than everybody, but we have what's called a strong city manager, strong city council form of government, the ultimate responsibility rests with the council. So if I'm going to be responsible for something, I want to have a vote. I want to be included in the decision, and that's why I'm making this, this kind of a recommendation. I by no means intend to eliminate this mayor or any other mayor from the decision-making process. They are duly elected and they should be included, but I want to see an inclusive process that involves more of us so that we can get the city's business done, so we can get the people's business done. And that is, that is in pure and simple my motive for making the motion back on April 21st.
Perhaps the people would like to vote on this too then, that, because that would be more people, more inclusive. That's something we can talk about.
Pardon? Vote on what, Mayor? Vote on what?
This change. If the premise is, if the premise is that the more people voting, the more information you get.
I'm talking about the council.
I understand.
We are already elected.
I know you are. Does anybody else have any questions?
Are you suggesting a referendum?
Yes.
Right now, I'd like to keep with the agenda.
What were you suggesting? I couldn't understand it.
Mr. Spread said that he thinks if there's more people to think about it, more people to bring to the table, you get a better answer then. Would he be willing to do that in this case and open it up? Would he be willing to ask the public if they would like to have the code change?
You mean in a referendum?
Yes, certainly. If that's what the idea is, then more people, put it to the people.
Sorry, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Scott.
I just want to make sure we're avoiding another impasse where no nominees are coming forward and council, who are all elected, cannot fill these forward. We've got one office that's been vacant since January, one since April, and 12 more that are going to be vacant next week, and we just got to move along. So, you know, if the mayor has a voice in selection, selecting that, fine, but we, council has to have, you know, if, if, if we have a subcommittee and she doesn't want to bring any forward, I don't know if that would happen, but then there's got to be a way to move forward, and I think that would, so.
Part of the problem, part of the problem in finding people to serve on boards and commissions, now that council has, if you will, sullied the reputations of some of the people that have been brought forth, people are reluctant to want to put their neck out there now and have people say unkind things about them. So that's something that we all need to think about as well. I've had several people lined up that have withdrawn as a result of the treatment of the last few people that we have put up for appointment. Find people, find people that could have given good things to our community that are no longer interested.
There are other people that have applied.
There are.
And, and haven't been moved forward, so that's, and I asked Greg how many there were, and he said, well, that that information of recent months has not been shared with him, but I believe there's at least one and probably more, so I'd like to see those move forward.
The last one I put up, I asked for a motion, and you all sat here and never said a word. I didn't get a motion, I didn't get a second, which, so we got no discussion. That's what happened with the last person that I brought up. I have not brought up any since.
That's true, but there's also more that have applied.
Yes, there are.
Just to get that side out.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Yes. I'd like to clarify the January meeting item in my understanding of what you're bringing forward. So there's really two items. There's the board and commission appointments, library board, Muscatine Power and Water, et cetera, and then there are the boards that, or committees that council members are a part of as well. Now, in January, following the prior year's election, the council could meet to distribute those committee assignments. During the year, the council could meet at any time, whether it be by committee or, and then by committee as a whole, to review board and committee appointments. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I didn't even talk about the internal committees that you're talking about. That would be, right now, that's already handled by the city code, and it didn't appear that there needed to be any change, similar to the, the boards and commissions that aren't identified in the city code. That would be something that I believe you can already address under, do you agree, city administrator, or are you saying that you want that changed as well?
I'm indicating, you can put it in the rules, you could, the council rules, it could be by, by city code, you could formalize it in city code and have an organizational meeting in, in January, whatever the method being, so that there would be a formalized method for council.
All appointments, whether it's external or internal.
Right. So we have MAGIC, we have MusCom, we have a number of boards and commissions. Now, some of those are statutory, like by state with the mayors, is the city's representative on by state, and then we have a technical advisory committee that a staff member sits on. But there are boards like MAGIC or MusCom that, where we have council representation, and the council could divide up those committee assignments in, in January following election as a formal process, and that could be done by the code or...
Correct.
Council rules, correct? Okay.
Yeah, honestly, you can do it either way. I think council rules might be the better way to address the, the January meeting because I think it's easier for you to suspend council rules or change council rules as opposed to the multiple readings for the changing of the code of ordinance. I will give it to you both ways.
Good.
Any other questions for the attorney? At this time, I would entertain a motion to allow people in our audience to come and address council.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Alan. Second?
Second.
Bob? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have members in our audience tonight that are interested in coming and speaking to us about the topic that we're on, that is on our agenda tonight. I would ask that we all be respectful of each other. I would ask that we try to limit our comments to three minutes or less to give other people a time, time to talk. And I would also ask that we don't all get up and say the same thing, so if someone has already said your comment, if you'd please refrain and try to say something different and new. So if someone would like to take the podium, please state your name and address for council.
My name is Shelley Van Winkle. I'm a registered nurse. I live at 313 West Third Street. I live here in Muscatine. And I'm seeing, as you all are speaking, that Mr. Mandazger, he has this job where he's trying to juggle all these multiple responsibilities, and I am seeing in some places a lack of accountability amongst you. And I'm seeing that you are a peacekeeper, and I applaud you for having the guts to speak on behalf of the mayor and, and, and ask that we support her in her job. And I appreciate that you're being brave and that you're digging in your heels and you're saying, "I brought forth an appointment and nobody spoke up." And then I see this lack of accountability, where everybody's just kind of looking the other way and saying, "Yeah, yeah, well, we didn't really do anything about it." And I see that you're trying to explain multiple rules, and I see that you guys have a great idea with the subcommittee. So I'm going to urge that the subcommittee idea come forth. I think it's a great idea because we need to get things moving forward, and I'm going to urge you, Mayor, to work together with your people here. We need to get things moving, we got to get these appointments moving, I think it's a good idea, let's do that. But I also urge all of you gentlemen here to listen to these people in this audience. They're here to support your mayor. You have to work with your community. This has to work. She's got a couple more years here, and if you don't listen, these people are going to vote you out. You're not going to be sitting here much longer. Your power is only going to be as long as these people will vote for you. You're not going to be here much longer if you just start working together with your people. We have to get our city moving. I applaud all of you for the hard work that you do for this community, and I applaud you, Mayor, for what you're doing. Good luck.
Thank you, Ms. Winkle. Next?
My name is, my name is Ava McBride. I live at 903 Newell Avenue, and I have been frustrated for a while. I've come to several meetings where I've seen votes happen, and not a lot of input that's come in from the community has been recognized in those votes. We voted to elect the mayor. You changing the way the government works after the fact is disenfranchising the voters of Muscatine. I mean, as Shelley pointed out, you were elected to represent us. You were elected to represent us, and so was she. So if there's something else interfering with that, I mean, the frustration you see here today is what happened. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride.
Well, good evening. My name is John Dabee, 2515 Lucas Street, Muscatine, and I'm not stranger to the board, to the council here, nor the mayor. You know, I attend meetings from time to time, especially representing Sister City. So first of all, I would like to say millions of thanks to all of you. Thanks for all your service. You know, brothers fights, sisters fights, but guess what? We need to know and learn how to put our, our differences together and come out together stronger. Because if we continue to do what we are doing right now, all of us going to sink. And we don't want to see Muscatine sinking because we have differences between the council and the mayor. I have a great respect for every one of you. I have a great respect for our mayor. I have a great respect for you, Greg, but I would like honestly to see all of you working together. Because unless we work together, we, all of us, going to sink. So, please, on behalf of, I don't know if I can speak on behalf of people or not, or the citizens of Muscatine, but we are all watching you. We all want you to work together. Because that's the only way that all of us can one day stand up and say, you know what? We all succeed because we are one hand, because we decided to work together. So please, please, take it from me, hopefully, or if you don't, it's fine, but I do have a respect for all of you, and I would like to see all of you working. On the other hand, I see the great respect that I receive as a president for Muscatine Sister City from mayors from all over the world, when they send me letters to turn to our mayor. And I see the great respect that I see in a letter like that that comes to me. see in a letter like that that comes to me, and then I hand to our mayor. And if foreign mayors from all over the world have the respect for our mayor, we should have the respect for our mayor to begin with first. So, please, I mean, let's work together. I'm not, I'm not trying to create any issue, but I do have an issue that I will raise later on in regards to the city attorney. We in Muscatine have a lot of attorneys. We in Muscatine have a lot of lawyers here. I don't see any reason why we have to go two and a half hours from here to have a, or hire a lawyer to be our lawyer here when that lawyer is not with us every single meeting. But with that, thank you, and hopefully all of you listen to all of us, that we want you to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John.
Good evening. My name is Susan Corey. I live at 603 East 10th Street, Muscatine. I have several points to make. My first point is to tell you, the city council, that while you may be satisfying the letter of the law, you are not meeting the spirit of the laws that strive to make public decision-making transparent. The fact that there was no discussion when Mr. Spread proposed the motion to direct the city attorney to draft language for an ordinance change tells me that you all discussed it and made up your minds prior to the meeting. In other words, you hid your conversations from the public, and I have to wonder why. My conclusion, which leads me to my second point, is that your collective handling of the matter is nothing more than the old boy's network in operation. A network that wants to keep the balance of power completely in the hands of the council and senior staff. If you truly wish to improve city government, I would expect you to invite the participation of the citizens of Muscatine in a thoughtful deliberative process and not continue with this particular sham. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Senator Roger Roth, Clark House. Concerning Mr. Fitzgerald, you smiled about cut and dry. It's not that way. Those cell phone things up on the Clark House, that people had no chance to respond to it till after the last one was put up. That's cut and dry. No citizen response. That's unconstitutional. Now, concerning the matter here, excuse me, the matter here. The city attorney got up an idea through council. Why not just let the city mayor appoint the committee that appoints others? And that committee will give to the mayor and council the information they have for possible appointments. Now, we also have, what about midterms, like the one from June 30? Could you in January put someone in office? So when the other term expires, they're all ready to do their job right away without the hassle later on in the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roth.
Good evening. Andrea Wilford, 1025 Orchard Avenue, Muscatine. I've written to some of you. I, I wrote a letter to the newspaper because Mr. Kemp, who's to serve on this board for many years and was my mentor, was a part of the charter. And I use that charter. I have his original copy in my, on my desk right now in my classroom when I teach U.S. government. And I love that charter. It, it was really well thought out. And, and I'm not sure who pointed it out here earlier, but it was absolutely correct in the eighties, and I was here. We had some problems in city government, and we did change the regulation on the mayor and, and made sure the council had oversight on her appointment to the police and fire department. So I, I remember those times, and that was the only little change we saw. And I did write, and, and Mr. Nutvig, you wrote me back, thank you, and it was a very good letter and very informative about, you know, I wanted to know what was going on because I really care about how we conduct government. And I like to encourage my students when I'm teaching government to come down here and get involved. And I think we have a great system. I do think that, from the information I was given, that I looked around at some other city governments, and there is an application process for a lot of the boards and commissions that they put online. And then, then you can have people see which are the vacancies open, and people apply for them. And then, then you have a list of appointees. So I would recommend something like that. And I guess my biggest concern here tonight, when I hear you're talking about some of the changes, is we have eight charters you can operate under in Iowa. Ours is a special charter, and it really is this, this magnificent, well-balanced work that Larry Kemp put a lot of work into. And he had his master's from, in political science from U N I. And when I hear you taking away more power from the mayor, or some of these suggestions you're making, I'm thinking, well, are we looking for a different type of charter? Because, you know, ours is a little unique. We have our mayor come in, and it's only a two-year term. And, and it's the will of the people that come in, and they're, they're pretty much a figurehead. But appointing people to commissions and boards is one of the things they do with oversight of the council. So I'm not sure why you need to take that away, though I understand there seems to be some backup with the appointment procedures, and that's a problem. But I'm going to tell you the real reason I'm here tonight is I was talking to my 87-year-old father, who for 30 years served as director of utilities in Sioux City, Iowa, well, for 20. He worked at the Cedar Rapids Water Works to begin with. And then he was the director of utilities for Manatee County of a million people in Florida. He was in charge of water, sewage, and roads. And when he retired, they had to hire three people to put him in charge. And I said, Dad, I want your opinion on this. You, you always have to work with boards. And I remember your troubles, you know, commissions, boards, whatever. And I explained to him what was going on here. And he said, because I had a concern about the power and water appointee. Because I looked that up. They get paid 150 bucks a month. And, and I said, well, I think I understand that maybe this person wasn't qualified. And he said, Andrea, the only thing you need to do to be qualified, to be on that utility board, is to be a human being that has a brain and common sense. He says, because every human being cares about their water rates. And every, and that's why I'm here. Because I think what you told me was like, maybe this person didn't have the qualifications. I thought, well, that sounds very reasonable. But if we have an application process too. And the other thing is, the main thing these commissions do, because he also said, Andrea, they're not doing rocket science here. He says, this is a little city government. He said, get your people in. You got to be like Andrew Jackson. He would rotate everybody in. He didn't care if you were a dog catcher. He'd make you mayor or city administrator. Not that I support that. But, but, so I, I just, I feel like we need some changes. Like, I like the application process. And I, I think that's probably necessary because it really is hard to get people to volunteer for your government. And it is a democracy, and it's people, we rule, and we get involved. And you need, you need a lot of voices. You really do. And even if they're different from yours, that's how democracy works, because we come together, and our ideas clash, and we have to compromise. But also, these boards serve as oversight. You got to have some fresh eyes in there so that people, you know, somebody will say, hey, I'm not sure about this. But guess what? Who has the bottom line? You're right, Mr. Spread. You guys have the bottom line, but you already have the power. You can, you, and that's the other thing about appointees. If you appoint someone to a commission, you can yank them if they're being crazy. You can do it like that. It's not like getting rid of some people. All right. So I've said my piece, and I love my town. And I really don't want you to change the charter unless you're going to like, adopt a new model where we go city administrator, council. And we could do that. But we should vote on it. But I, you know, that's also a good plan. And I like our city administrator. He comes, talks to my government classes, and he does a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilford.
I don't know if I can top that. I'm Chris Clark. I live at 2429 Longhurst Court. And as I was reading through the city code, and I see that the mayor has the right for appointments, and, you know, and that the city council has the, the right to say yes or no to those appointments. And from what I understand, there were two appointments that were made, and the city council approved them. And there were a couple that were not approved yet, or haven't been approved. So it seems to me that this process of checks and balances is working. And if it's working, why do we find it necessary to change it? And to take the power out of the hands of an elected official, to put it into the, to the hands of someone who is not elected? I just don't think that's. So, you know, if, if it's working, it shouldn't be changed. It doesn't need to be. This is a democracy, and I'd like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Starkweather, 1013 Weir Street. First of all, Muscatine, congratulate yourself for showing up. You guys, this is what democracy's all about. That's why we're here. And that's one of the pillars of our government. I bring a little bit of a unique perspective to this as I am employed by one of the companies that the board, that the mayor appoints the board to. They have a substantial input into my financial welfare. So obviously, that is a big concern to me. And, excuse me for a moment. I personally like that extra layer of filter in there, having the mayor appoint and the council approve. I think we all feel the same way. So, again, not, I'd like to make it clear that I'm not here representing, representing Muscatine Power and Water. I'm purely an employee. And thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Loret, 716 West Third Street. I've served with a few of you. The others I know through other avenues. I think, I think my recommendation would be that you leave the mayor to appoint the boards and commissions. Those are volunteer positions. I, I do believe she has a good point about the fact that it is hard to recruit volunteers for these roles. I have some experience in that area. It's difficult. But I haven't heard too much feedback on the other part of this. And I would echo Councilman Fitzgerald's comments that for the police chief and the fire chief, every other position for city staff flows through the hiring process that, that city administrator Montzager manages. And I'm not sure that there's a reason for those two positions to be treated any differently. And so where that change is concerned, I, I totally agree that that should fall under the recommendation of the city administrator with the council approving. But as for, as for the boards and commissions, those are volunteer roles. And I, I feel like the process worked in this case. You weren't happy with what was presented, and you blocked it. And it can be vice versa. You can have, you can have people that maybe you're not comfortable with, or that you don't want to accept, and she can block it. The comments about working together, I, I totally agree with. You, you've got to agree that the people you're bringing on board are acceptable. And you all have to. But that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loret. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll close this part of the agenda. I would just like to add, before we move on to number three and get our city attorney update, just some follow-up about my take on the fire and police chief duties of the mayor. In some of the research that I've done with Iowa League of Cities, the reason that those were left in instead of going with the city administrator where the other staffer hired by him, was because the state has a code that in the event of an emergency, whether it be a civil emergency, a tornado, a flood, something, something to that effect, it has to be the highest elected official in the city that takes charge of the city. That would be the mayor in our case. In that situation, the people that are responsible for our safety, the police and fire chief, have to have some accountability to the person who is in charge in order to provide our safety. So if the police and fire chief believe that there's nothing that the mayor can do to them, if they do not follow through with whatever order it would be that needed to be done for our safety, that puts us in harm's way. That's why, obviously, our founding fathers and the people that worked on the charter so efficiently, as Ms. Wilford said, that's why they left those in there. It's not like they just forgot to put police and fire in with all of the other employees that the city administrator hires and fires. There was a reason behind that, and that's what it was. Public safety. We don't have the option to change that rule that the state gave us, that the, that the mayor takes control in an emergency. So that's my take on that piece of it. And we didn't get a chance to reflect on that too much.
Your honor?
We're going to move on. Pardon me?
May I respond to that?
Yes.
Yes. Each one of our comparable communities that we use for union negotiations and for employment and higher, hiring situations, every single one of them, the city manager or city administrator appoints the police and fire chief. All but one of them are subject to council approval. So just as a comparable.
And that is something that, that has been talked about recently, that perhaps we, if, if changes are going to be made, that it might be something, I mean, last year, the, our codes were updated. So this is something new that has came up. Obviously, it is something that's been on the table for a while, or it would have been updated last year. But that's something else to consider, is if council wanted to take over final approval of all city department heads, not just if we changed it to fire and police. So let's move on with our agenda to number three. I'll turn that back over to our attorney, Matt Brick, for an update.
Thank you, mayor. As you all may recall, April, specifically April 15, the city filed an appeal of the decision by the joint drainage district number 13 to annex approximately one-third of the city into that drainage district. A subsequent notice of appeal was filed in Muscatine County District Court on May 4. And that appeal was filed by Kent Feeds and associated companies, Muscatine Power and Water Board, the county of Muscatine, and the city of Muscatine. It's one joint appeal where we're all joint plaintiffs against the drainage district. By law, I think you'll recall when we talked last time, we talked about the fact that by law, these things move really quickly, and we didn't have a lot of time to look at it. One of the biggest issues is when a notice of appeal is filed, typically you only have 30 days to do the whole hearing and the discovery, and it's quick. So the first motion that was filed, Kent Fields, their attorneys, the Bellin firm in Des Moines, have essentially been handling most of the lion's share, which is nice. They're paying the bills. And Muscatine County, Muscatine Power and Water, and the city of Muscatine is just somewhat along for the ride. They filed a motion, we all agreed to, to extend the timelines and treat it like a normal appeal, which would allow the city and the county and everyone else to get plenty of time to get whatever discovery we need, take whatever deposition we need of the joint drainage district commissioners. And that motion got granted, thankfully. So as of July 27 of 2016, there's going to be a hearing of all the parties here in Muscatine County to set the discovery schedule, to set the deposition schedule, and to set the date for the appellate hearing. The important thing for all of you to note is at this time, we do not anticipate any of you elected officials being called as witnesses. So, that's good. If that changes for any reason, we will let you know. But right now, we wanted you to know, the process is still going on, and it, it's not as good as having the insurance defense take over and pay our bills. But we do have a lawyer who's on the same side as us, who's doing most of the grunt work. For example, I'll ask Greg, I think the packet of all the properties was how many pages? Like 30, 40, single-spaced?
Yeah.
He's the one who had to go through all that and determine if they were eligible for appeal or not. Things that would have taken city staff or your city legal hours and hours to do. So that's the status, the first status. The second thing, on May 11, I want to bring your attention to the fact, city staff was contacted by I-Pers. And for those of you who are not familiar, that's Iowa's Public Employees Retirement And for those of you who are not familiar, that's Iowa's Public Employees Retirement System. The agency is currently reviewing an anonymous complaint involving the hiring of a retired city employee who came back as an independent contractor post-retirement when their position was not filled to assist with the city. City staff was asked to respond. They have responded, and they've provided evidence to suggest that all the allegations are without merit. It's been over a month since we've received any further input from IPERS, and we just wanted to make you aware of that, in case you hear anything about it. And we will certainly update you when we finally hear back from IPERS.
So what, excuse me again, what, you haven't heard the final, but the initial response was?
The initial was, they asked us questions wanting to find out if the rules under IPERS were followed in-
Correct.
-someone retiring and then being paid as a contractor. City staff responded, "Yes, the rules were followed. Here's all the procedures that were in place." And now we're waiting to hear back from them on that.
Okay.
Also, on May 11th, another anonymous complaint was filed. This one was filed with the state auditor's office, requesting a complete re-audit of the city's 2014, 2015 fiscal year. The request, at this point, nothing has been done, other than we've been notified that the state's reviewing it and will likely be proceeding with the re-audit. Staff has let them know, we are willing and able and prepared to assist them in any way on this, but we have heard nothing. And that one's also multiple weeks since we've heard anything. But again, there may be some questions that come to you from the state auditor or something that staff needs from you as a result of this. So we wanted to make you aware, and when we know more, we will certainly make sure you're updated. Yes, sir?
What would be the, if we go through a re-audit, what's going to be the cost to the city and taxpayers?
In their initial letter to us, they said the cost to the city, there would be no cost to the city.
Initially?
That's their first letter, so, I mean, until they change that position, but-
Okay. So the state taxpayers are taking the hit on this one, huh?
The state taxpayers would be taking the hit on this. Yes, sir.
That would be us.
And then I wanted to give you an update. As you'll recall, over the last four months, the city has received four, or sorry, three separate open records and open meetings complaints that have been filed with the Iowa Public Information Board. The first two, as you'll recall, were dismissed before they ever actually went in front of the whole IPIB board. The third was dismissed as legally deficient on June 13th of 2016. So that's kind of an update on the claims and the appeals and the status of all the things outstanding. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Brick. We're going to take a 15-minute-
Before then, I'd like to make a few remarks, please.
Comments are going to be after.
All right.
We're going to take a 15-minute recess so that we can move into closed session. If you'd be back at, uh, three minutes after 7:52.
Not according to the agenda.
37.
I just didn't do it without an audience.